We're going to hand it right over to our student representatives for all the things I have.
Here's the call for our new students, just starting their term next week, which is fun, so that's really exciting. And we're just about ready to meet your halfway mark for spring and we're estimating it to be about June 10th, which is coming. And then Pierce College also just introduced a new class registration schedule where students now start signing up for all classes a year ahead of time instead of a term ahead. So they just kind of gave us that all of a sudden. So everyone's figuring out their schedules for the next four terms. And then also the state thing is going on at high school. I heard everyone's really enjoying that. And yeah, that's about all.
So we've got testing, we've got state testing for all the younger grades, and then we have AP testing for juniors and seniors, which is finishing up this week thankfully because everybody's schedules have been thrown off. We sold out of prom tickets again this time, just like Tolo, we sold fun and everything went perfectly. Everybody had a great time. We had some more record breakers. It's class of 25, I'm telling you. So Janae Rouse and Kai Nation both broke the 100 meter dash school record.
Wow.
Yeah, so they're heading to districts today and then hopefully to state next weekend. Pierce County Skill Center registration opened up for upcoming juniors and seniors, so that's open for the next three-ish weeks. May 31st, the band is holding a jazz night and auction. I think it's 6:00 PM, not positive, that's at the high school. And then seniors are either done with or starting their senior presentation. So things are really starting to close up for everybody.
And thank you for reminding us about the Skill Center also, so that everybody knows you can register for summer classes also. And you can do that in your summer of your eighth grade year. I think that's what all my kids do. That's a great resource. All right. Thank you. That was great. Great reports. So now we get to move on to reports and presentations. We're going to hear about the after-school tutoring team presentation.
It's just me.
Yes, there's going to be a floor.
Okay, you can go to the next one. All right. So I'm here this evening to talk about our success here at EES with the after-school program. So we offer three days a week after school for an hour of students to come in and work in small groups. So this last session, we had 35 kids sign up, which was huge. And that was in fall. In spring, we had 32. And those are different groups of kids, so it's not the same. A lot of the 35 graduated out, which was awesome. We were sad to see them go, but it was also awesome that they are out of the tutoring program. So that means they were at grade level in their literacy. So we were able to graduate them out. And so these are some of the things that we do. It's six kids to one teacher. So oftentimes, they are reading one-on-one with an adult or with a peer. So they're reading every day in a small group setting. There's, we do games. So they, one of their favorite activities, they made a big game board of certain skills, phonics skills we were working on. And they were able to take it home and play with their families. So that was a lot of fun. And then you can go to the next one. So why it's important. Not only does it boost their confidence, they're able to, one of the biggest things about their confidence is being able to read at their grade level for a portion of the day. So they, they're not afraid to make mistakes because all the kids in the room are at the same or about the same grade level, academic level. It's a great opportunity for other teachers that aren't their classroom teachers to make a connection with them. So a lot of the kids that I would never have a connection with, I do. We've got two separate rooms. So in here, we do first grade, second grade, and third grade. And we have three teachers. And then next door, we have the fourth and fifth graders together. And it also gives, it changes their perspective for school. They, they come and it's a different way of connecting with school, just not their classroom teacher. And we can go to the next one. So there was a lot of buy-in. So all the different schools do a different tutoring format. Ours is after-school. And a lot of the teachers have noticed or buying in. They notice the confidence in the students in class. They've seen the growth in the students in class. They'll stop by before they go home and the kids are so excited because they're like, can I read this story to you? Mrs. Tree, can I get, read the story to you, Mrs. Hall? So they come in and stop in. The parents, a lot of buying in. They know they're leaving their kids somewhere safe and it's structured. So there's, let's see here. You can go to the next one. So here is some of the scores. So improvements, 35 kids were in fall. Out of those 35 kids, all but one had growth in both ELA and math. And then this for spring, we weren't able to do the second diagnostic for iReady. It's not till June, the first week in June, and so our session ends at the end of May. But we have, we started with 18 students in the 1-2-3 session. Zero knew were at grade level in their lettering fluency, which is a huge predictor of later reading success. We have 16 now at grade level or above. And it just, you can just tell in their, you know, they're reading now at their grade level and they're wanting to read the next grade level. Or they're asking, is this a first grade story? And like, it is a first grade story. And they're so excited that they're at their grade level. And the second graders, this is second grade? And I'm like, yes, it's second grade. So, and then in the group next door, 11 out of their 14 are now at grade level fluency. And all 14, all 14 are at grade level in word recognition. So that's the last thing I want to do at the end of the day is, you know, come in and teach kids, but it is so, it has brought so much joy to us that we, Morgan Northern and I, and I want to thank Mr. Berkley, Mr. Brower, and Mrs. Keely for taking the time to meet with us. And we had this proposal for summer school. And they gave us the green light, all the support. Mrs. Keely has been helping so much with emails and putting it all together that we're providing this for the entire district for summer. So we're doing three sessions for the community. We're also, we're inviting all the MLL students. We're going to have an interpreter here. The Google form that's going home will be in Spanish and English. And then we're also inviting all the red students from iReady and also teacher input, counselor input, because we're going to have a social-emotional piece. So a lot of the times, some of these kids are at home by themselves all day in the summer. You know, they don't have food, sorry. And so we saw the importance of this and proposed it. And now we've had 15 teachers want to be a part of it. So we're doing one to, one teacher to eight kids and 15 teachers have, they've seen it, they're, they bought into it, they want to be a part of it. Today, in our staff meeting, Mr. Burke was like, okay, if you guys have students that you recommend, our phone, me and Morgan's phone was lighting up before the meeting was even over with all these teachers, like, we want this kid in, we want this kid. So, and that is open to the entire district. There's also, even if kids on the Google form, if transportation is a problem, there's even an option that we're going to make sure that we get done here. And I think that is, that is kind of all I have for, I'm, I'm super excited about the summer school part. And we're doing art, outside learning, social-emotional. They get two different snacks for the day and we get eyes on them. Some of those kids that we don't see again till September. And also their confidence boost that they're going to have going into the next year that, you know, because there's summer slide and the gap. So we're just, we're really excited. So we're inviting kinders going into first. And then the fifth graders going into middle school won't be invited, but the rest of the students will. And so the sky's the limit. If we can get as many kids as we can, we were, we were told that we can. And so, super excited. So again, thank you guys for, you know, meeting with us and backing us and supporting us. I really appreciate that. But yeah, do you guys have any questions?
How long is the summer school?
So it's three sessions, one in June, one in July, and one in August.
For how long?
Three days. Three days.
So cool. Just an idea, I don't know what your financial abilities or recruits are. So I saw some areas where they were able to keep in touch with the kids through other times. Being going back to the dreaded COVID days with virtual settings where they were meeting with them, like in reading after those events took place. And other times just coming with cohort of kids and they get to know each other.
Yeah.
Just, I, I'm so, this is.
Yeah, we're, we're so excited. This is the first time. And allowing, you know, having those MLL students coming in and having somebody there to communicate with the parents when they're dropping them off, the form that they're filling out. And then to be there for the lessons, because we've had a big influx in Spanish-speaking students that know no English. And so giving them that opportunity is, and we want to keep growing it. We have so many ideas. I'm like, what else can we do? Can we take them out to the library? Can we go to the pool? You know, all kinds of stuff. But yeah, so I'm super excited for it. Yeah.
Really exciting. So like, Mike, one, thank you so much for the work that you're doing after school, but for coming up with this idea, for being willing to propose it. I think that's really great. My curiosity is, I'm guessing this funding's coming from multiple areas. Is it part of our grant? Is it part of the MLL funding?
It's actually our tutoring money for scholarships from the Wilsons.
The foundation, yeah. Wow. So this is community, this is a gift from community?
Yes. Yes. And so that is, yeah. And there was, you know, a few things that they wanted to see, which, you know, which is amazing. And so, yeah, and just, yeah, there's 15 teachers. And we're like, we didn't think there'd be that many to sign up to spend their summer, you know? But they've seen it here and just the difference in these kids. And some of the kids say it's their best part of their day is coming in here. And so. I know, it is. It's, and we see them in the hallway and they, you know, give us hugs and it's just, it's been awesome. So, yeah.
Thank you to you all for being willing to take part of your summer and then to partner with the community. I mean, this is just magic.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's very cool. So thank you guys so much for your time.
All right. Now we get to hear Professor Berkley.
Just a few things to add on to the tutoring piece. Another piece that Ms. Holland didn't really touch on is the value of tutoring for our care team and our MTSS process. Because we get the data from tutoring and we use that as part of a data point for our care teams. So we can get supportive, whether it's a special ed referral or interventions and things like that. So that's another component that's been very valuable relative to tutoring. The other piece, like kind of with the community connection. So like today, Pizza Wednesday, a lot of times, MLA will bring the pizza down to our kids in tutoring so they don't miss out on Pizza Wednesdays and then feel like they've got to skip tutoring to go to it. So that's another component of just kind of a lot of different people working together to support our kids. So. So let's just kind of thank you, Ms. Holland and the other, the other tutors for that. They've been doing like great work. And that was where I asked them to present because a lot of times it's, and I'm not knocking these programs. It's Mr. Hunter doing his thing with music or Ms. Ricketts with art. And I think one of the biggest celebrations that we have is our building is the success that we've had with our tutoring program this year. So I wanted to honor that. So, so moving on to my presentation. We'll get rolling here. So what I'm going to touch on first of all is it's kind of a unique opportunity to look back on the goals that I shared with you last year. And then we'll get into our SIP plan and then the next steps that we have based on the data from this year. So that's kind of where we're going. The next one. So the, the three goals as far as like look for is that I, when I was here last year, that we were talking about was, first of all, was our fifth grade students that had historically struggled since COVID. And as they'd moved through ES, it was just that group had not historically scored well on state testing. And so that was one area. And then we had interventions. And last year, it just, it wasn't as consistent. And so that was another area that we've touched on and some goals for this year. And then lastly was our K4 students. We'd seen some successes. And so that's going to be another thing that we kind of highlight on as we move forward. So this is really the only one that I wanted to look back on because it's, they're the only group of kids that we don't have here anymore. So this group of students, when they, just kind of as reference, so they scored last year on the SBA, 35.2% in ELA, 33.8% in math, and 46.5 in science. What they had scored the previous year was 26.1 in ELA and 26.1 in math. So in both cases, we saw over a 10% growth from that class. And I believe, and part of it is, I believe iReady and having that tool was one way that we helped our students really try to get, because that's kind of the emphasis for fifth grade is we got to get them as close as we can to grade level before we send them off to the middle school and as prepared as possible. So, so that's just kind of a check in on honoring the hard work that our fifth grade teachers did last year, getting them ready to go to Eatonville Middle School. And then this is, these were our SIP goals for this year. And so goal one is a 10% increase in students in ELA based on SBA and spring iReady scores. And spring, our spring diagnostic for iReady doesn't start till right after Memorial Day weekend, so we don't have that data quite yet. So the data that I'm going to show you is based on our winter progress monitoring data. Goal two is for math, a 10% increase based on grade level standards, SBA, iReady. And then goal three was a 5% increase in our average monthly attendance based on, I've got a trend data of each month and our percentage of daily attendance for the last three years. So that's kind of how we monitor that one. Okay, so this was our data for last year for the SBA, just as a reference. So we've got third grade at 45%. If you guys can read it, you have it in front of you. So, so this is just a reference kind of where our kids were at at the beginning of the year, rolling into their grade levels. And then I'll show the iReady data here next. And so this is, this is small, but in general, the celebration, if you look at all the percentages, and so the bottom one that's really light was how students scored at the fall benchmark at the beginning of this year. And then the top one was how they did at the winter benchmark. And so for ELA, every single grade level had a 10% increase in their grade level standards. So given that this was in January, I would hope that that's going to, if we could get another 10%, that would be phenomenal. So we've had some really good growth this year with our students relative to ELA. And so then another kind of metric, just to look at this, is iReady gives you, the goal would be is we want to see typical growth. And that's the, like, okay, are they on track to meet a grade level's worth of growth by the end of the year? So that's this annual typical growth. And currently, in January, what percentage they were ready, like had met that growth. And one of the things for me as a principal, I look at is this stretch growth goal. Because when students are multiple grade levels below, they have to reach this stretch growth goal to catch up and close the gap. So I look at the percentages of students that meet that stretch growth goal. So seeing 19%, 20%, 32%, 16% for stretch growth in January is extremely good. And so trying to get those students caught up is one way of measuring it. And so I think that a lot of the emphasis that we've put on reading, like for tutoring, for example, we only do reading. We don't do any math intervention with tutoring right now, just because if they can't read, it's really hard to be able to read a word problem in math. So that's kind of where we've put our emphasis this year. And so this is just by comparison math. And so similar trends, and it's the same setup. So the light one is fall, darker one is winter. Based on this data, every grade level made a 10% jump except for fourth grade, but only had a 9% increase. But still by January, and our goal's 10%, that was a, that was another success with that. And so then this one is a little bit different. We didn't see the stretch growth goals that we see with English, which given if we're not emphasizing it, then that kind of makes some sense. And historically, our students have, I mean, math is harder. So we see some lower scores with math. So we've seen the one celebration that I would want to acknowledge the most is fifth grade with 39% in January already meeting their typical growth goal. They've done a ton of work on math instructional strategies and having them rotate around the room and team learning. And I know that Sally, she's got a professional growth PD group that's doing a book study that they've been implementing that, those techniques in class. And they've been doing some phenomenal work. And I think that's why you see that 39% in a grade level that has struggled in the past. So that's a, that's a positive relative to our math scores.
May I ask a question? One, I want to celebrate the fact that you're doing so outstanding in your growth and ELA. And I know that we're hoping to start leaning towards magnetic and those types of things in math. Do you see a time when you'll be able to use that tutoring program to really enhance both math and reading? And would you have students just really applying, you know, coming in for different reasons? You're here for math and we're going to focus on math with you. But you're here for reading, we're going to focus on reading. Or are they going to, is it going to be kind of comprehensive where they get to do both?
Well, so we had a meeting with all the principals and the mayor and, and it's really exciting to see, kind of like with the summer program, the flexibility that can exist with our tutoring. I mean, I was talking with Ms. McRath about, we have ability to do some social-emotional tutoring and things like that. So I think the sky's the limit on how we want to structure tutoring. I mean, it was kind of the first year, so we were trying to feel our way through it. I feel like once we get, and I'll answer some of the questions on why I think this data is good, goes the way it goes. But I think, yes, eventually we can have like, one adult is going to be the math tutor and English tutor and maybe do different rotations where different kids are working on a different subject. Because most of the kids would need both if they're attending tutoring. But I think we can definitely evolve to get to that point for sure.
Because I mean, it's obviously working. So yes, we want to make sure that, I don't know how you make that happen on both English and math, but that would be exciting to see.
Yeah, I mean, the only hard part is that it's only an hour.
Right, exactly.
So that's, so that's the one question is just trying to, how do we use our time the most effectively? So. Okay. And then this one is, this is the moving target for me. So, so this is the trend data on our percent of daily attendance for the last three years. So the percentages you see is basically on a given day, what's the percentage of your student population that shows up? And so this is by month. And so September's super good. And I think part of that was at the beginning of the year, like at a district level, we were communicating out so much about attendance and why they need to be there and then kind of the value of it. So I think that was one reason why we saw this percentage there. And so then we hit a level of illness through our building that I have not, I've never seen a percentage in the 60s before. But we had like 15 to 20 kids going home, five staff a day going home throwing up, like it was, it was a thing that moved through our building. So that's where you see those two red months, which essentially annihilates any hope of getting to that 5% increase in, in attendance. The one thing, and actually we can go to the next slides and I'll, I'll talk about attendance and a little later on why I think we're going that route. So relative to English and why we're getting the results that we're getting, I think number one would be relative to Sally and Dracy is we did a really great job with the new ELA curriculum, implementing that along with, the previous two years was a shotgun approach to interventions. Where it was just, what's in the closet? What do we have? And there wasn't really a lot of intentionality behind it versus this year. It's, it's two, three things, really detailed. Sally did a great job of coordinating, training for our paras in lap and title, for phonics, for reading. So they felt confident giving the instruction for intervention. And I think that that's one big component of why they're confident giving those interventions. And then we're seeing a lot of growth and success in English language arts. So I think with that data that you saw and those massive increases, that would be what I would attribute the biggest reason for it. Tutoring helps, but students get the intervention from their paras or their teachers four days a week. So, so that consistency with that, I think attributed to that. And so that focus on it, we had an additional para that I used our, our school improvement money. And so with that specific para, we had a handful of students that just didn't fit within our intervention groups and needed more intensive, like one-on-one instruction. And so we've used that para to give that one-on-one or two-on-one instruction to those various kids that needed that intentional support. And then there's a few grade levels that they saw kind of some significant reading challenges. And so I allowed them this year, and when you look at the math, I'm not going to do that next year, but I allowed them to double up on their ELA interventions. So when most grade levels were doing math intervention in the afternoon, I let them do ELA and double it. So, so where we see really positive results in ELA, we didn't see as good a scores in math because I allowed that grade to kind of double up. So, but I think that intentionality around the interventions and the, the focus on implementing magnetic in a thoughtful way has, has definitely improved that. And so then, this is kind of a side component. And to be honest, it's, it's been a lot of what, outside of the academics, I've probably put more effort into this than I've done anything else this year. And it's not in my building SIP plan. And it's because eventually it just came out that this was the priority. So, so the district gave out a climate survey that, you know, we, I will say that I very much was asking for. And through those results and seeing how the staff scored, I met individually with pretty much, I would say probably, every staff member had an opportunity to give input with the survey. But then I probably met after that to get feedback with about 60% of the staff, either one-on-one or with small groups. I gave them the opportunity to ask how they wanted to communicate with me. After meeting with them, then I met with the leadership team. Here were the results. And then we kind of came up with a few kind of short-term between now and the end of the year. year, things to address our building culture. So these are kind of some of the highlights. So first of all, we're starting our staff meetings at eight. We used to start them at 7:30. So then our classified staff were on the clock and could attend, because our classified staff were feeling left out of the building culture and not included and not communicated with. So we wanted to make sure that they were included, so then we delayed the staff meetings till eight. Another thing was, especially with our classified staff, I've probably hired 10 people since the beginning of the school year. So the group that was all together at the beginning of the year is not the group that I've ended the year with. So the last few hires, when they arrive on their first day of work, then Sheila Pellon takes a picture of them, puts it in her daily announcements, so that every person in the staff goes, oh, when I see that person in the hallways, that's who that person is, so that they can introduce themselves and they know who they are and can welcome them into the building. So that's another, and it seems common sense, but it was just, it was something that wasn't happening. And then we've got some, a lot of staff just said, bring the fun back. So part of that is our social chair, Ms. Debbie, doing some things. But you know, each grade level, for example, we've got a, and it's empty right now, but we would do a display out here in the display case. And it was like around St. Patrick's Day, was guessing how many marshmallows are in a box of Lucky Charms? Or we had a, how many ducks are in the display? And they would have to count the ducks. And so the kids, as they're walking down to go to music or PE, would look in there and try to count how many ducks. So that was just one example. Or we did an egg hunt as a staff before the staff meeting. We, there was like all sorts of different random hiding things and just, just different things to bring fun back to the staff has been, and those are not necessarily coordinated by me, those are just grade levels taking things on and being a part of it. And so then the next step was, there's a lot of staff wanting some norms on how we operate or, you know, even down to copier etiquette and things like that. So, so that's some things of just next steps of kind of building on that. So that's going to be another goal moving forward on that. But this has probably been where I've put most of my effort this year is on this, so.
May I ask a question? I think it's great that you're able to teach your classified staff at the museum. Are you meeting with your certificated earlier?
No, they're all together at one time on that one. So, yeah, that way everyone gets the information at the same time and everyone's on the same page. Okay, and so then here's kind of the areas to watch. So then hopefully this time next year, then these are the things that I'm telling you how we're doing on or how we did on. So the first one would be is replicating what we did for ELA in math. So, and I know the core curriculum, that's a whole, that's Sally's gig right there. But, but the intervention part, I think really trying to streamline that, get intentional with that and not kind of have this, because right now we're kind of scrambling and pulling from different things and there's not that intentionality that we've had with the English language arts. And so I think that's one reason why we're not seeing the growth in our math scores that we had in ELA this year, because there's just not that intentionality and we don't have, we haven't had the training and there's not that like confidence going into it of providing that instruction. And that's just, that's also a piece, especially when you get into the older grades, that then, you know, some of our classified staff don't necessarily have the confidence of providing those interventions that some students need when we get into that. Attendance is, that's a beast. And I'm not sure where, so I've done some incentives and so I did like a pizza with the principal this year was one incentive that I did. And I targeted students that had missed over 20 days of school. And we did a tracking, like they came in and they would stamp a calendar and if they'd missed one day or less for a month, then I took them up to Miles Pizza for a lunch. And for the kids that wanted to participate, that was good. But you know, for, you know, the 40% that didn't, then that wasn't really an effective incentive. And a lot of the different incentives that we can try, well, not, a lot of the issues at the elementary level are not with the kids wanting to come to school. It's the parents getting them to school consistently. And so I'm not sure necessarily how you incentivize getting your kid to school for parents, because there's some parents that, you know, they're prioritizing other activities that are happening out of school instead of school. Or they, one kid's sick, they're all staying home sick. Or if I'm sick, I'm not able to take them to school. So there's, there's so many different things that go into that. I know like as a building, we haven't filed many BECA petitions and part of that has been my philosophy of like Jenna and I working together to try to figure out what those families need. We have so many families that are in crisis that need more wraparound services and trying to take that approach with our families rather than kind of leveraging the legal side of it. And lately, the legal side of it hasn't had a whole lot of teeth anyway. So that's been something that just, but then we found the families that even when we give them those services, then it's still not necessarily improving things. So I feel like this is one where it's going to take the whole district kind of coming together and figuring out how buildings can, we can commonly come up with a way of communicating to our families and trying to leverage our parents to value bringing our kids to school consistently again, because it's just, it's not, not there for some of our families. And so, so that one's, it's a harder one to kind of put a finger on, because it's not the same issue with every family. So, so that's, that's another one, just we're going to have to keep working and keep trying. And I know every building's kind of doing different things. And so that's where we have to come together and figure out what's working for you, what's not working for me.
So at the beginning of the legislative session, Senator Braun, I don't know if you've heard it, big announcement that they were going to have money or liaisons specifically around attendance to do much of what you guys are doing right now, reaching out and filling the gaps and finding the needs. Has any of that been brought back? Okay, so I'll need to find out more about that.
Because I was there, they were looking at getting rid of the whole legal BECA petition requirement. That was another thing that the legislative, they were considering, but I don't know where that one went either.
I have a truancy meeting with Pierce County next week, so they're going to update us. On that specific? I believe so. Okay, all right. Thank you. It'd be great to get the report back on. And if there was anything that came through in the final budget for that, that would be nice to know. But one thing we do know that has worked in our community, and I'm going to credit Mr. Rush for saying this, whispering this in my ear, but this might be a community forum where we can bring people together and say, help us, our best solutions come when we work together. And so I think that, you know, it could be a community forum in the making.
Because it could be a great idea for the leaders team, looking at what our services they can provide, there's lots of things.
And then lastly is just continuing to work on our building culture. And I mean, we've had some growth in it, but we have a long way to go. So we're going to keep, and it's not anything that you can necessarily stop working on, you've got to keep working on it. So that's going to be another thing for next year, so. And I believe that is it. Questions?
I just have one real quick, I was in the back. Are you guys finding pretty good, my eyesight's bad, so I'm sorry. It looks like you guys see pretty good correlation between like your end of the year data, you saw the fifth graders on their one-shot example at the ESPA versus their, their I-ready scores at the end of the year, there's a pretty good correlation.
They were similar.
They were similar.
Yeah.
Deviation, it's one shot versus, yeah, I'm just curious.
And Sally and I were actually talking about this today. That spring I-ready data point is really hard to gauge, because like, for example, like our students after Memorial Day, like our fifth graders are going to take the spring diagnostic, well, they've already tested for three weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
For the SBA. So that, the testing fatigue is real when you get to that spring data point. That's why a lot of the emphasis is put on that winter data point, because they're just, there's not anything else really happening around it.
To be clear publicly, I like our internal consistent growth over a single shot, you know, springs to be public. But I was just curious, do you guys do interims at all that compare? Is that just even too much more testing?
They've been doing interims, but a lot of the focus on the interims is trying to introduce the students to the tools for the SBA.
So it's not, okay, like does it correlate? Okay, cool. But last thing I was gonna say, if you guys, you and Jenna, need any help for your attendance thing, just email me or something. What if you need some outside person to do something for you, since my daughter goes here?
There's a, there's a program that I had when I worked in North, there's something called Watch Dogs that I want to look into.
Dad's at school?
Yes.
Yeah, I was, I wanted to create that and I, I will help.
So that's one thing I'm interested in trying to implement.
And there are community members who've actually approached me about it, so I know you'll have support there.
I would, I'd love to help you with that.
Okay, duly noted.
Anybody else have anything?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and for all the hard work and thoughtfulness. And also for, you know, being honest and vulnerable about the hard things and what you're doing to work on our family. Great conversations, that's how we get things done. All right, are we turn the time over to our?
Where are we coming in?
Very nice.
He showed up two weeks.
We're just a bonus twice.
Here it is on there.
Brownie points for being here.
We were happy to stay and watch the presentation, so thanks for having us. You just got to see us twice.
I mean, I will be here.
Thank you, Mr. Burner. To say things are busy and things are moving would be an understatement. There's just an awful lot going on that's really good. I'll begin with Community Day. We made a concerted effort this year to make it something more than just a school day, as it kind of happened in the past. We made, we brought a big team together to talk about how we could not only have a May Day coronation, presentation or ceremony, but to expand that in a grand fashion. And so with the beginning of the day, we had, first time we've had a stadium groundbreaking since 1937. Actually, I don't know if they even had one then. But we began the day with an awful lot of people there, elected officials, actually kicked off with three skydivers, kind of local legends, who did skydiving into the stadium. And then that was followed up with an awful lot of hype about the fact that we're coming together. So when we initially, when we initially had a community forum, which we've had a lot of those, it's been very successful, then we went to our community and asked what they felt like were the priorities. And the board listened and we helped two levies, an enrichment levy or educational programs operations levy, which keeps the lights on, keeps gas in the buses, keeps, you know, salaries going and such. The second part was a capital projects levy, which would include money to, to address our very long overdue replacement track and field. We just were very hampered. Our student athletes just don't have a level playing field, unintended. We just don't. And so, so out of that, our voters came in at over 57% approval rating to, to support our capital projects levy, which among other things, replacement track. So that three and a half million, and since then, we worked really hard to also address something that was maybe even longer overdue. We were trying to be very sensitive to our voters, which is a stadium that's not safe, not on the record if you want. And so since that time, we've almost doubled the amount that we've set aside for the track and field of three and a half million dollars. We're approximating matching that through outside grants, donations and requests that have been granted. And so I'm very, very proud of that. So yes, on that day then, we had a really nice groundbreaking ceremony and it also included a 100-year-old graduate of Eatonville High School, graduated 1943. And if you ever want to, I'll show you where her picture is in the high school. And so she brought, she brought her, she was 100 years young, and so she brought her sister as well. We also had the grandson of BW Lyons, was named BW Lyerfield, and two of his grandsons were there to celebrate him. And so it really was a great day to kick off Community Day. Following which, we'd had a wonderful May Day coronation, wonderful program. And then following that, then a band of cheerleaders led everyone into the streets, shut down Michelle Avenue. Thank you Mayor for doing that. And we just had a great fair. We had just people in the streets all the way to about 7:30. And it was just a really, a feel-good thing, very great opportunity. Speaking of stadium again, we, today, we signed off and we ordered our stadium officially, putting colors and all sorts of things, which we'll show you those when the lockup comes. But we were able to find our school colors to have that be part of our stadium. And so that was, this is a great day for Eatonville. In addition, our Ruralite magazine also discussed from page front cover, the existing stadium as well as what the proposed stadium most likely will look like. Actually, well, it's just not quite the same colors. This is the forks, this is what, this is very similar to what we'll have. And so that, then we've received a lot of support from the community as well as, you know, just state level, so we're very grateful for that. I wanted to note that the amount of effort that's being put forward to move our academics forward is really paying off. When I was able to do a learning walk at both warehouse or any elementary school, I was just particularly proud of the student engagement, the academic rigor, as well as the student self-discipline. Student experience was there, they were excited to be there and the teachers were teaching with fidelity and intentionality. And so I saw that in every, every classroom that we visited. And again, want to appreciate the hard work Sally and others have done to get us to that point where our magnetic is really an I-ready, are really paying off. They're giving us the data we need to see where we're at, where we need to go, as you saw with next presentation. And the trajectory is good. Our strategic plan, as you recall, was academic achievement. And to help that happen, to focus on attendance, we started that a year ago by getting, working toward getting the number of bus drivers we needed to get kids to school. I'm happy to report that so far this year, we've had, as far as canceled routes, we've had a grand total of only zero canceled routes. We're doing our job to get kids to school and as you know, we, now I think it's time to turn to our community and come up with what we need to do, and our community and beyond, to find out how we can make sure that our students are in their seats every day, because when they are, they will learn and they will do very well. So I'm like really proud of what's happened. And as my dad always said, the biggest dream in the world is a move for improvement. And so we've got a lot of growth to do and we'll continue. And, uh, so we've got a lot of growth to do and we'll continue to all along the way. I wanted to, I asked Sally as part of my communications if she would just give us just a little update where we're at with our, with our assessments. She's in charge of assessments and she and Tracy work together on a lot of things. But I've asked Sally if she'll just share us a little bit about that.
So we have jumped into SBA season, testing season. Um, I will, the schedule has been staggered. And our first school EMS started testing the window in the week before 28. And our last school, our school that finishes out will be in 5:22. So we have staggered schedules, our third through eighth grade. Students are all, and 10th are testing at ELA in math. Um, three, five, and eight are also testing science on top of getting math. Um, the ELA test is two sessions and then we have math and science tests. And of course, there's options for some kids for pathways as well. It might be a level of 12 that can have the option to join us too if they are at school or graduation pathways.
Thank you very much.
Can you give a law aid update? Um, our students in, with more significant disabilities, we had 20 students this year take the law aid, so as their state assessment. And those are all done and wrapped up and waiting for their scores to come back from their portfolio.
First year to do those.
First year to do those.
Yeah, yeah. Very excited about that.
So in years past, I, it was the last year, a week, around testing season, it was always, you know, um, we didn't have bandwidth, everything was crashing. Had all the technologies worked?
Yes.
Wow. I can't imagine I should have said that out loud, but it's, it's a disaster in that way. Yeah. Yeah, it was crazy. So, uh, good job, team, technology team and teaching and administrative team.
Thank you both. So again, we have one more chance for a learning walk. And, and I know you've been invited and I know some here are not able to attend, some are able to attend. I hope those that, that are able to attend can share their experience. And I think you'll be very pleased with that. Also had a chance to, uh, to brag about Eatonville and the great work that we're doing at, at larger than Eatonville, going to what's called Mid-Carney Shit Team, which is often up to the shows and kind of entails from the Franklin Pierce School District to Bethel School District. And so we also asked that we include in that, even though we're pretty far south. So I had a chance to do a presentation this last month during the smooth, a lot happened. And, uh, and so with that, sometimes comes opportunities for people who want to share that success. And, uh, so we'll continue to do, you know, presentations as we're, as we're invited. So with that, I think the last thing is, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And so we did a couple of things to try, well, did a few things to try to help our teachers and certificated staff know how much they're appreciated. In addition to, uh, really some, some nice, uh, certificates, we also, um, arranged for lunch for all staff, not just certificated staff as, as once a year, uh, to, with Ramesh Kumar from Karma Restaurant to, um, to just show our staff how much they're appreciated. He, he also wants to do that. So again, this is, this is maybe our second or third year doing that. Um, and, um, we also, you know, just with emails and just visits went around and we gave these all out and just want our, our certificate staff to know how much we appreciate them. So with that, thank you.
All right, Travis?
Uh, just want to say thank you to Mr. Berger. Um, I have a student who goes to school here and loves it to death and do a fantastic job, and so does your staff. I have a student who went to a different elementary school and it was fabulous as well in the district. So I've always hated the competition between all of them as far as we all feed the same high school and each of them have a different clientele. And they all do an amazing job, but just from firsthand, I can just tell you that this is an amazing place and they do a fantastic, fantastic job. So, um, that and, um, um, thank you to, I went to EMS with Mrs. Carr yesterday. We did a workshop in Mr. Heeman's class. Uh, board, running for school board and its connection to community and, uh, student rights responsibilities. And he, I was blown away by his fantastic management of classrooms. Just got to shout out Mr. Heeman if he exists. It was amazing. I was like, whoa, he actually made me miss teaching in school. So, but it was great and fabulous. And last but not least, a board note to, uh, I didn't do this as a board member, I'm doing it as a community member, but looking into a grant that I applied for to help adults in our community go back and get their GEDs and learn alongside their kids. So hoping to see if that comes through this summer, uh, which is an opportunity for them to bring their kids in as well and do things while their parents are achieving. So it's a pretty good combination, so hopefully that can come to our community as well. So we'll see. Yeah, it'd be a big plus because I think it's a big pullback, so, you know, so, yeah, we'll see.
Karen?
Uh, yeah, thanks so much. Um, I, I, I just want to start by saying thank you for having us. And, um, the passion for the Turing Project was very heartwarming. And, uh, just knowing that individuals are taking time out of their summer to give to the kids is a huge thing because that is a very selfless act. Um, no matter what's involved in it, it's selfless. Uh, and, um, it was really awesome to hear that, you know, and shout out to Amy on, um, the, bringing the pizza to the kids who are still learning and making that happen so they don't feel left out. So shout out there. And, and, um, I appreciate, as a former classified staff member, the, doing the meetings at eight so everybody could be involved. Um, I, I think there's, um, definitely a benefit to having, um, the inclusiveness for everybody being together and feeling like a team. And so I, I'm hoping that good fruit comes from that. So, um, yeah, Travis and I, I love the opportunity to be able to, um, we spent the day with sixth graders. And, and one, and I think the big end question of the day was what we felt there to, to convey to them what their responsibility was as students, what we thought was, you know. Um, and I really feel like they took so much out of it because they didn't know. It actually costs, you know, a grandma, uh, tax dollars that's on a fixed income, you know, is, is paying money or voting for them to get extras in their life. And, uh, you know, for, it's, it's a benefit, you know, it's an opportunity for them to be here. It's not, you know, it's a gift from a country. And, you know, we, we vote on that and we make it happen. So, um, it was, it was a very, very good experience. Uh, so, yeah, just, just awesome. I, I just, we have a lot of people with really big hearts in, in our community and, and I'm hoping it rolls around. When I saw yesterday, it's rolling over into the kids. The kids are proud of their environment.
Thank you so much. Thank you too for taking the time to do that.
It was honestly fun. It was honestly fun.
Well, and you were the kids.
Yeah.
And with Mr. Berger.
Awesome.
Hello? I echo what has already been said. And just wanted to say, Nick, that as you were giving your presentation, the one line that came to me is, "It takes a village." And your staff has proven that. And I want to say thank you very much for all of our staff coming together to help these kids.
Thank you. I guess that's me. Nick, um, thank you again. The presentation and helping us, uh, see the data, learn more about it, understand it better is always really important. A, a long list of gratitude today. I had the opportunity to meet with the Eatonville Business Association. I heard nothing but accolades around, um, Community Day. And I, I want to give a shout out to Jay and to the mayor for, um, being willing to take on one more thing and bring community together and make it a present. Um, it was recognized and noted by the community when I was there today and had wonderful things to, to say also about our kids. Like they loved the focus being our students, which just made me really happy. So thank you for that work. We, uh, closed out the legislative season with $800,000 coming from our legislators. Um, Senator McHugh and Representative Marcus and Representative Marshall have stepped up and got, procured for us $800,000 that we'll be able to put towards our stadium. So grateful to them for that hard work. Um, so if you see them, please, I'll thank you. Um, Sally and Tracy, uh, the work that you do does go unnoticed. I don't necessarily notice it until, uh, people like Nick stand up and say, "All the great work that you're doing and all the professional development you've put into place to really helping the money that we spend on our curriculum going in and just with integrity and showing the growth." So thank you so much, because I know that I didn't recognize that appropriately. So I want to thank you for that hard work. It's making a difference. And the generosity of Karma India, Indian, for bringing us food once a year. Who couldn't be grateful for an Indian lunch with friends and communities? I think that's awesome. Um, I think that's it. Thank you so much for being here. Thanks for opening your school to us. We appreciate it. And also thank you to Cassie and IT, because when we do these things, it's a little bit of a crazy day for you to make it happen. So thank you, we appreciate you. And with that, we're in close meeting, close at eight.
I have to tie the lights on.